October 21st, 2025. And it's really not painful for me to be talking. It may be painful for you to listen. I feel fine. I just woke up this morning and had lost my voice of all times. So anyway, I'd ask the city clerk to call the row. But again, welcome, happy to have you here tonight.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Mayor Bray? Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Present. And if you would stand, I would ask Commissioner Henderson to lead the invocation. Commissioner Smith, if you would lead the pledge of allegiance.
Sure.
God of heaven, we come again in your presence and we are always grateful for the privilege that you've given us to serve. We pray, Lord God, that as we serve and as we make decisions, that we will all be able to look back and determine that we have made the best decisions for the masses and not just a few. We pray, oh God, for continued wisdom and for insight. It is in the name of Jesus that we do pray and we thank you now for everything. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City manager, are there any delegations to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, pro temp, none this evening.
Okay, great. So we do have a proclamation and I've asked Lindsay to read it.
Whereas the McCracken County Humane Society has long served as a symbol of compassion, providing shelter, protection, and loving homes for countless animals throughout our community. And whereas the dedicated staff and volunteers at the McCracken County Humane Society work selflessly each day to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of animals in need, offering food, medical attention, and second chances. And whereas animal shelters play an essential role in protecting public health, promoting responsible pet ownership, and advancing animal welfare through adoption, education, and spay neuter programs. And whereas National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week observed November 2nd through the 8th, 2025, provides an opportunity for the public to recognize and celebrate the tireless work and unwavering commitment of those who care for our community's most vulnerable animals. And whereas McCracken County Humane Society embodies the values of kindness, stewardship, and service, helping to make our community more humane and compassionate for all living beings. Now therefore, Mayor Pro Tim Sandra Wilson on behalf of Mayor George P. Bray hereby proclaims the week of November 2nd through 8th, 2025, as National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week in the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and encourages all residents to support, volunteer with, and show gratitude for the life-saving work of the McCracken County Humane Society.
Great, thank you. So we're very honored to have you all here. It is National Animal Shelter Week. Tracy Phelps, Director of the McCracken County Humane Society, and I see David Box here with me. If you all would join me here so we could have a picture and make a formal presentation.
Do you want to make any comments?
Thank you so much for supporting us. This is since I took over as director, it's just been my mission to get awareness out there for what we do. Some people still don't really know what we're about, so thank you so much for this. It'll help us be able to get our mission fulfilled and continue those great programs for the animals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. You provide a great service to our community and we really appreciate all that you do. Next, we have a presentation and insurance update from TJ Story, our benefit advisor with Hub International. Hub, I don't know. I added international.
No, yeah, that's how that works. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, City Manager. Thanks for having me again today. This is the time of year we get to talk about benefits insurance. And I will go through a brief overview of where we are, where we've been, and then what the outlook is for this projection in upcoming year. Please let me know if you have any questions as we go through. But again, we'll talk about historical plan costs, the 2025, how we project that the year will end from a cost perspective, and then 2026, what we need to do in relation to the budget, and then city allocations and changes for employees on the benefits plan and structure. So historical plan costs, it's important to remember that the city's health plan is self-funded and there's a few main components to that. If you don't live in that world every day, I'd just like to give a refresher. For the most part, for the city's health plan, everything, the majority of the costs come from the claims that the employees and their dependents actually have within the health plan. We pay a small portion, that orange sliver of this is the administration. We use Anthem for their health plan administration and to process those claims. We play a slightly larger amount to stop loss insurance. The stop loss just protects the city's cost from really large claims. Somebody comes on the health plan, they have a really large claim, stop loss protects the city's assets there. And then the majority of that pie chart is the claims that we actually have. The city's responsible for first $175,000 of any individual's claim within the health plan. So everything underneath that threshold is what the city is paying for their insurance. On the net cost of health insurance, there's things that bring the city's liability down. Some of those are stop loss reimbursements. So if we have that individual claim that goes over that $175,000 threshold, that usually equates to about 4% net cost back to the plan in a given year. We have employee premiums, so employees are paying to purchase the health insurance themselves. JSA is the joint sewer agency. They pay to be on the city's health plan and about 10% cost come back through those premiums. So the city's net cost is roughly about 75% of the total cost of the plan. Here's where we're at from a historical net plan cost perspective, how much the city is paying out in the relation to their health insurance. So you see, over time, we've had a little bit of gradual increase. This year, 2025, we're projecting to be just around $2.75 million in cost after we net those different components I just mentioned out. We were about $2.2 million in the last couple of years, but that has ratcheted up. There's various factors that that I will get into, but it's not unique to the city. Health plan costs have been on the rise, as we all know. We've just been affected by that really in this past year, 18 months, more so than normal. From a per employee per year perspective, this is how that breaks down. So you'll see the chart looks very similar, but from a per employee per year perspective, we're at $9,724 we're projecting this year to end. The positive side is, is that when we look at, from a Kaiser Family Foundation is a benchmarking tool that I use frequently, we look year to year, how do we compare to what costs are out around the nation? The annual cost for single coverage, this isn't exactly going to align apples to apples with how the city's plan operates, but the average cost of single plan coverage is about $9,000 in the nation and family coverage at about $25,500. So the fact that our per employee per year costs have ratcheted up close to $10,000 is not unique in relation to what's going on around the country, but it is still more than what we've spent in the last couple of years. Rising healthcare costs, I just wanted to make note, a lot of articles have come out recently that have talked about the average healthcare cost on the rise between 8% and 9%. It's the highest inflationary change in healthcare in over a decade. There's a lot of reasons for that. Somebody, you know, asked me recently, okay, what's the cause? Do we just need to do something different? Do we need to change the way the plan covers? Well, there's a lot of variables to that equation. So hospital labor shortages and the cost of labor when it comes to the healthcare industry is going up. High-cost medications, which are not unique to the city, but we have that as well from GLP-1s and specialty drugs, as well as gene therapy medications are driving those costs around the country. And then rising costs of chronic claims and mental health claims. I've seen more mental health claims in the last couple of years than I've seen in all the time I've been doing this, and just more and more on the rise there. So we're just seeing a lot of that. That's putting more cost in the premiums, that's putting more cost towards the claims of the healthcare for the city's plan as well. And so that's driving a lot of that change. For the city itself, we have been typically in a lot of given years, we'll have a few claimants that might reach or get close to that $175,000 threshold. This year, we've had more than that. We've had, we're approaching in the four to five range of that claimant. The other problem is, is that really what drives a lot of costs for a self-funded health plan is, do we have more claims underneath that? And we're getting that as well. So even though you might have somebody that's not reaching like a $175,000 threshold, if we have more people that are at $20,000 than are at 10, then it's all adding up to a cost of our plan, and that's what we're seeing a lot of in the past 18 months. So to project out where we're going to be this year, admin, stop loss, and claims before reimbursements is tracking to be about 3.6 million. Current funding is right about 3 million. So we're underfunded in relation to this. We've had to look at the overall budget and we have been benefited by the fact for years we've set money aside within that escrow to cover ourselves. When the inevitable change or cost of healthcare kind of catches up, right? We've been good at budgeting appropriately, that's now kind of eked into what our escrow balance is now today. So when we look at this for 2026, the cost of admin and stop loss is increasing, and also the projected amount of claims based on those healthcare trends are increasing. So this is a projection based on that current funding remaining the same. If we had those projected costs, the underwriter is looking at a $3 million claims expectation. I think that's probably conservative. I don't feel like we're going to get fully there. And the benefit of being a self-funded plan is you only pay the claims that you have. So the underwriters and the stop loss insurance is always going to kind of give themselves some cushion, overly project where you could be at based on inflation. Our goal is to try to come in underneath that when we have those claims come in. But if we budgeted the way as we are today, we'd be severely underfunded and we'd be eating into that escrow balance at a significant rate. And then obviously, if we had a maximum claims year, that would be even more so. So based on a proposed budget increase, this would, our funding would move up to about 3.6 million. We feel like that would put us within the margin of error on the funding needed from an expectation of our costs and claims. And if we were to have that maximum claims year, that still would be something that would eat into that escrow balance, but we feel like that's less likely than it is that we would come in at an estimated cost or a projection there. What questions do you have at this point?
So really, just to summarize, check, see if I'm digesting this properly. So really, you're saying we need to put in about $921,000 more to protect against the maximum and also to keep our buffer?
Yes, I think the goal should be that our allocations and the cost, the budgeted cost for our healthcare has been pretty stagnant over the course of the last 10, 12 years. And it's, inflationary changes have been happening. We've just kind of been able to absorb those. I think now it's the time where we have to say, okay, well, we have to increase that amount of budget to kind of get back right size to what we need. I don't think that it's likely that we were going to have a $4.5 million claims year. In fact, when an underwriter puts out an increase in the estimated claims, they're putting a 25% buffer on top of that towards the maximum. And the goal for them is to never hit that. That's not a likely scenario. But that's just, they have to put something in there that says, hey, here's your maximum amount you could pay. So really, what we're looking at is that expectation has gone up. Let's make sure that we budget to where we're getting closer to that expectation and we're not eating into our escrow balance and we can continue to grow that over time.
And we haven't raised our rates for how many years?
Since 2013.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a long time.
Very long time.
I mean, for me, I kind of look at it as how we do, how we've done in the past, garbage. We kept the price. We'd never raised the price, even though inflation keeps coming up. It's kind of been the same way with this. But it does, when it does come up, it does come up and you have to put in a chunk and people, it just, sometimes it's better just to take an incremental increase each year than it is to, but there's different philosophies.
I think that's exactly right, Commissioners. And then me and Stephanie were talking about this earlier, is that I don't know what the right way to do it is. It's either you're going to say, we're going to need to make incremental change over time, or have to make those budget adjustments on an annual basis, or we know that that will change at some point and we're going to have to make an adjustment that's a larger adjustment at that time. I don't know if there's a right way or a wrong way, but that is kind of where it's come to at this point.
So you're keeping the escrow balance though at 2,500?
That, so that is...
2.5.
2.5, that's the balance that has accrued into that escrow account for the health fund now. So the thought process would be, we want to either keep that there or grow that by having, budgeting enough that we're outpacing the costs of our administrative stop loss and claims. And so if we want to keep that there, we have to increase our budget to kind of outpace the costs that we're going to incur. If we don't do that, then we're going to be eating into this balance in this next year and the year after. And then at that point, it might be a more drastic change to the budget would have to So historical allocations, quickly on the premium for family coverage, just back to the comment you made, what hasn't changed in a long time? Well, in 2014, the benchmark for family coverage, how much it costs the actual worker to pay for that family coverage was right around $4,823 per year. That jumped up in 2019 to six grand and a little bit more in 2024. Our investor plan, which is our lower cost option, if someone does the work to get their full wellness credit, even with this adjustment to employee premiums, will be still underneath that 2014 average. And if you say, well, they don't do any of that wellness credit, they're just going to take the allocation from the city, they're still going to be underneath what healthcare costs were in 2019. So I think we're still providing a really great benefit to employees, even though we do have to make an adjustment this year, or we're suggesting to make an adjustment this year. So here's the historical allocation over time. You can see that things have not changed in a very long time for the employees and the allocation that the city provides and the insurance premium as it stated. In 2026, the recommendation would be the city allocation does increase, but the premium total does increase as well. And so really, the net change for employees is just over there. What's available for them to invest into their HSA is a slight adjustment from where it was in 2024. There is a little bit more cost involved with that. So it's, the overall budget costs do go up. The city is bearing the brunt of that, but employees do have an increase in cost also. And this does a breakdown for us that shows what that looks like. Like my spreadsheet is not correct. Yeah, that's, this is not. Oh, it got cut off. Anyway, I'll talk through it. But the, so the employee only, the net cost for you all, for employees. Well, what am I doing? Come back to me. The net cost to employees on employee only on the investor, if they, either they do the wellness or they don't do the wellness, it's not showing up here, but we'll make sure that you have this copy, or the correct copy, is about $5 difference per pay. So really, minimal change to the employee on their, what they'll see in their paycheck. The family does have a larger premium differential of $39 per pay if they do the same as they're doing today. So if they're not doing wellness, it's a $39 change per pay. If they are doing wellness, $39 change per pay. But the thing we want to encourage, we do have a lot of participation in the wellness program, but if you're not, this is a perfect time to make sure that you are making sure to maximize those dollars because that can help offset that cost of that increase. Even at that larger amount, at $234.50 is the amount that they would be paying for no wellness on a family plan is under benchmark for family coverage, especially at this level of a plan. We did have to make some plan design changes. These were not what we wished to do, but the IRS did put some new minimums for health savings account-based plans. We had this happen last year. They've done that again this year for 2026. What that means is on that investor plan, the deductible for single coverage has to move from $3,300 to $3,400. They do not mandate that the family deductible has to increase, and so the city made the decision to keep that the same, to leave that, because the family coverage premium cost is going up more. Let's try to make that more fair by not increasing their deductible as well. So the deductible would remain at $6,600 and then the out-of-pocket maximums would remain the same. We do want to make sure that the investor and the elite plan, that someone isn't worse off, so that out-of-pocket maximum does mirror each one. So we did make the adjustment to the elite plans, just so it mirrors what the out-of-pocket maximum is for the investor plan as well. Any questions on that? The other renewing plans, it's pretty easy. No change on dental, vision, HRA, HSA administration, or our advisory agreement. So there's no changes to those agreements for this year. We did want to highlight that the wellness program is working well. We're getting a lot of participation there. 88% of employees are on the app. 78.6, nearly 80%, are active on the app. As a person that has, we had our own wellness division back a handful of years ago. That's an amazing amount of participation. Now, of course, you're investing a lot of money for folks to participate in their plan. They're getting a lot of dollars back by doing so, but to have nearly 80% participation is unheard of in a wellness program. So it's really, really positive. And what we want to do is, I mean, their cost of healthcare goes up, but if we can help continue to focus on preventive care, taking care of yourself as much as you can, then that's going to help them lower their costs. It's going to help the city lower its costs. So our recommendations are to increase that budget rate and allocation as presented, renew the insurance and service agreements with Anthem, Voya is our stop loss carrier, Delta Dental, our service agreement or advisory agreement, each of them haul for life and LTD did not change as well, neither did Colonial, and then the HealthWorks agreement. Any questions?
Go ahead. Any questions?
No.
Approval of a lot of this is in the consent agenda. So just want to make sure you all seen that in advance. Well, all of it is.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Now's the time to ask a question.
You did a good job explaining it.
Well, thank you. I was looking at it and it's been 10 times in front of you guys, so hopefully we got this down, but I appreciate it. Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thanks to the city staff for putting a lot of time in on it.
Thank you. I know HR Stephanie, you're great. Thank you for everything.
Not you.
All right. Are there any public comments? But they would have to be limited to once on the agenda, so we don't have any. Okay, great. All right, then we'll go to the consent agenda. Items on the, I'm going to let you read that to you.
Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be acted, enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval. Is there anything to remove?
Anything to remove? All right. And if you would read the consent agenda.
Approve minutes for the October 2nd and October 3rd, 2025, special called meetings of the Board of Commissioners, receive and file documents, personnel actions, a municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed of conveyance, permanent right-of-way easement, fee consideration, and all other documents necessary with Lisa Rudolph and David Giltner, heirs of Opal Louise Giltner, to acquire a portion of a permanent right-of-way easement at no cost to the city. A municipal order authorizing the execution of a renewal application and agreement for the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Housing, Building, and Construction for local expanded jurisdiction for the Fire Prevention Division and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the Facility Maintenance Division of the Public Works Department to advertise for sealed bids for the City Hall HVAC equipment and duct cleaning. A municipal order establishing policy for use of spending credits towards the purchase of certain benefits such as health, dental, or vision pursuant to the city's group health insurance plan for the 2026 plan year. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for strategic health risk advisor and strategic benefit placement services with Hub formerly Pealan Holland for administration of the city of Paducah's health insurance in the amount of $81,900. A municipal order authorizing an agreement for administrative services with Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield for the group health insurance plan for the city of Paducah, Kentucky for the 2026 plan year and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order approving and adopting a comprehensive health insurance benefit plan premiums, the vision insurance plan premiums, and the dental insurance plan premiums for calendar year 2026 for employees of the city of Paducah and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the rates for stop loss insurance coverage, authorizing an agreement with the Voya Financial Advisors Incorporated for the city of Paducah, Kentucky for the 2026 calendar year and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved. Second.
All right, call row, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. So we have three ordinances for adoption tonight. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read ordinance 2A.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 20, Section 20-23, Subsection B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, so as to delete that portion which states that body piercing below the waist shall be prohibited unless performed by a physician licensed to practice medicine in the state. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city's ordinance is in conflict with the Commonwealth statute. Therefore, the ordinance is being enacted to amend the portion of the city's code, Section 20-23, Subsection B, so as to delete the language relating to body piercing below the waist.
So moved. Second.
We have already discussed these at the last meeting, so any other questions? All right, call row, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Now if you would read 2B, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance revising the existing remote workers incentive program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The remote workers incentive program shall be revised to include self-employed persons who can show evidence of self-employment and to provide a $5,000 cash incentive payable as follows, $2,500 upon establishing residency in the city of Paducah and $2,500 one year after the first installment is paid.
So moved. Second.
We've already discussed it as well, so call row, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. And now if you would read C, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2025-06-8847, entitled, an ordinance adopting the city of Paducah, Kentucky annual operating budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026, as adopted by ordinance number 2025-06-8847, be amended by the following reappropriations, increased revenues and expenditures for the CDBG fund by $583,406.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Call row, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Garrett, do you have any comments? City manager?
Mayor, Commissioner, and for the public, you know, the last couple of meetings, we've talked about the public, or the federal shutdown and the non, just for understanding, we're still in a good shape. However, we do have several grant programs that we're starting to see slowly or no response from our federal partners on that. And so we are continuing to monitor that. Hopefully, the feds will, you know, get that resolved in short order. We're at a good point now, but it is something we continue to monitor and watch and just want to keep you updated on that.
And now, the Board of Commissioners, I wanted to ask you about Third and Jefferson. If you could provide an update on that project of demolishing that building?
Yep, yep. As the Commission may recall, Third and Jefferson, privately owned property that had fallen in disrepair. The private ownership worked with the state to come to an agreement to how to address that. They are, the cost of that is borne by that individual. It's not on the city's cost. They had 30 days from the start of that to remediate the project. And as of the end of this week, we'll be at the 30-day, or close to the 30-day mark. And the lot, if you've driven by there, it'll be a lot different. Yes, they've been picking and getting that up to me. We have no official confirmation, but it is our understanding that there is some interest from private investors that have reached out to the existing ownership for potential acquisitions. So hopefully, once that is fully remediated, that there'll be a short order for that's transferred into an active use.
Great. Do I have any questions on that project? I would just say, I mean, I hate that it was demolished in a way. I mean, I know it had come to that part. So I think it is a reminder for us that we might probably need to look at our ordinances to see how we can strengthen them that a private landowner cannot allow their building to get in that kind of state where it has to come down.
Staff has been diligently working on that and next couple of meetings, we'll be having some updates on that to you.
Good. I mean, I think it's important, whatever we can do. I know League of Cities has looked... at some of those issues.
Yep.
We need to, too, because there are a lot of other buildings that this could happen to if they're not taken care of by the landowner.
Yep.
So, I think it's on us to do that.
Yep. We've been working with legal to get something, you know, addressed, and a couple of hiccups along the way, and some of the potential legal pitfalls that we had to maneuver around, but we are, staff has been diligently working on that, so.
Do you all have any other questions?
Did we vote on the budget, CBDG?
Mm-hmm. That was in the consent agenda.
Okay. Our no, our next meeting is November 4th. Was that right, due to the Veterans Day holiday?
Yes, yes.
So, we'll be moving that up, because our next meeting would be on Veterans Day, and City Hall will be closed.
Correct.
All right. No other discussion. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.